Here we go. Fashionably late.
They were just discussing docking your pay.
I know.
Still gotta fill out his terms.
Okay, good afternoon. It's 4:00 PM. Can you call the meeting in order, the November 16th Planning Commission Meeting? And call this meeting to order? Staff confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act it required notice has been properly provided?
I confirm packet was posted and notice was provided.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
We'll move to roll call. Commissioner Gilmore?
Present.
Commissioner Mike Sell?
Here.
Commissioner Linkowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Olson? Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Bernhardt?
Here.
Commissioner Waters?
Here.
And Chair Hay?
Here.
We have seven members present out of eight members. That gives us a quorum. And so, having met our required notice and having a quorum, we are ready to proceed with today's business.
Okay, we're gonna move to the approval of the minutes. I'm sure everybody's got a chance to take a look at them. Any discussion? If not, bring it back and have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes.
I second.
Go ahead.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? It passes. Seven, zero. Okay, we move on to new business. We're open a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two public hearing items for the commission to consider this afternoon. The first one is item 3.1, and that is an application that's been filed by Tian Tran on behalf of Artistic Nails and Spa. And the request is to change the zoning district classification from R1 to C3 Shopping Center District on a property located on the east side of Merrill Street, just south of Crawford Street. The particular address is 709 Merrill. And I think Dustin, you have the, Dustin has the arrow on the property now that is the subject of the request. We've provided a little bit of background information for you about the commercial building that's located there at the southeast corner of West Crawford Street and Merrill. And it's actually was three buildings built in three different phases. The first on the far west being a 30 by 90-foot building, and that was built in 1948. It has a zero setback on Crawford Street. And then there were two additional matching additions that were built to the east. Both of those are 22 feet wide and 75 feet long. And those were built in 1953 and 1955. On the permit plans, those were identified as office spaces, but our research indicates that most of the time this property was used for some form of retail space, automotive parts, a longtime location of a furniture store, and most recently, a second-hand antique store. The other thing that's somewhat unique is the south end of the west building at some point in time was converted to an apartment, and that apartment is addressed to 705 Merrill Street. In 2019, this building was purchased by Tian Tran, the current applicant, and the plan was to convert the former furniture store and antique store to a nail salon. That was considered to be an intensification of the use from a parking standpoint, and because of the limited off-street parking, we had to limit the number of stations in the salon to seven based on the available parking. And so, the lot area for this building is 12,500 square feet, but the building size is 5,800 square feet. It almost covers half the lot. And so, when you take into account the zero setback on Crawford and the high lot coverage, those all contribute to the lack of available space to add additional off-street parking. Right now, the site has 12 off-street spaces. Nine of those were newly added off the alley on the backside. And we don't have an exact date for when the house at 709 Merrill was built, but records do show that there are two detached garages behind the house. One built in 1946, the other built in 1940, or 55. They're both set up so that they're accessed from the rear alley. Those two garages cover almost the entire backyard. The rules in place today would not allow a residence to have two detached garages. They would be limited to one, but you can see from the aerial photo that there's two detached garages back there that occupy most of the backyard. The applicant's the owner and operator of Artistic Nails and Spa. They've identified a need for additional off-street parking for customers, and they're proposing to tear down the house to the south of the business to create space for construction of additional customer parking. This application has been filed to rezone the lot so it can be used for commercial parking instead of residential use. Solina zoning ordinance requires that off-street parking to serve a business must be zoned the same as the business itself, which in this case is C3. So, if this request were approved, it would adjust the commercial residential zoning boundary additional 50 feet to the south. So, your role today is to review the request and determine whether the C3 district uses and the C3 district development standards being applied to this lot would still be compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. We've summarized the basic standards for the C3 district. Obviously, C3 allows for a variety of uses in addition to nail salons. So, this is just a general C3 district. So, you should look at it in terms of other commercial uses, not just a nail salon or parking. There are requirements for retail space. There's requirements for nails salons of two spaces per chair or operator. And I think Dustin, if you could go back to the floor plan for the business, you could see that, at least based on this plan, a lot of this space was vacant and left vacant because essentially, the limit on parking limited how much of the building could be used for other purposes. And so, the first factor you're to consider is whether this site is suitable for development under the existing zoning, and whether the current zoning inhibits development or redevelopment of the property. The applicant believes that this lot is suitable location for expanded parking, that it's more suitable for parking than continued residential use, and that the R1 zoning inhibits her ability to expand her use of her building. Staff looks at this and believes that it's probably equally suited for parking lot expansion or continued residential use, and so, we recommended to the applicant that she not go to the expense of tearing down the house and garage until the planning commission had an opportunity to review and make a recommendation on the request. If this request is approved, it would expand the C3-zoned area from 100 by 125 to 150 by 125. We don't have a conceptual plan for the parking, but when you have a lot that's 50 feet wide, it's, there's limitations on how many spaces you can fit on there. But the other thing that's available here is the alley, and the alley could be used to provide additional parking that was accessed off the alley. The actual plan for the parking layout is not part of today's rezoning request. We would note that there's a requirement to add screening and buffering at the south edge of the lot, which could be an improvement on existing conditions. The construction of additional off-street parking could benefit the neighborhood by reducing on-street parking. So, you can see in the photograph, there's already an existing fence for that house to the south. So, with that being present, and if a parking lot was built on this site, the applicant would not have to build a new fence. They could just utilize that existing fence as their screening, but we would require a buffer strip along here between any parking lot paving and the residential property to the south. If you're familiar with the neighborhood, basically, if you start at Merrill Street and go west, it's predominantly commercial on the south side of West Crawford Street. If you look across the street, former grocery store, now a DAV store, is directly across the street on the west side of Merrill. If you go south from this area, it's solidly residential, all the way down to Republic Avenue and Sunset Park. So, this nail salon is really the only commercial development on the south side of the west Crawford corridor that extends only 100 feet south of Crawford. So, you can see that all the C3 zoning is much deeper as you go to the west, except you have this, this one notch right here. And so, if you're making a favorable recommendation on this request, you'll be extending or expanding an existing C3-zoned area 50 feet to the south. As far as public utilities and services, with off-street parking being the proposed use, utilities and services are not gonna come into play. As far as streets and traffic, Merrill Street is a residential street. It provides a through connection between Republic Avenue and West Crawford. It's got 60 feet of right-of-way and 33 feet of paving. This property doesn't have an existing curb cut on Merrill because the garage access is, is back at the alley. But I would imagine if there was a parking lot constructed here, there would be a, a street connection made to Merrill. The comprehensive plan shows this as an urban residential area, and one of the uses allowed in that land use category is appropriately scaled office, retail, and services. And we believe that a nail salon would fit into that retail service category. And so, we would note that the south side of West Crawford has historically had a commercial development pattern from Merrill Street West. The lot that we're talking about here is in a transition area between solidly commercial uses to the north and west, and solidly residential areas to the south. Merrill Street is, is not a commercial street. It doesn't carry a high volume of traffic. But if you look to the west, the west side of Merrill, the C3 zoning extends 400 feet south of Crawford, and on this side, it only extends 100 feet south. So, it's really a judgment decision for the planning commission as to whether the east side should be protected from further commercial expansion. So, we've laid out alternatives for you. One is to recommend approval of the C3 zoning as requested. You could recommend approval of an application for Plan C3 with uses limited to customer parking. We've outlined what the process of that would be. That would be making a recommendation to the city commission. If that is accepted, then the applicant would need to amend their request and submit a site development plan for their parking lot as part of that planned commercial request. You could recommend that consideration of this application be postponed to allow the applicant or staff to provide you with additional information. Or you could recommend denial of the request if you think continued use of this property as a home is both feasible and desirable for the neighborhood. We're looking at this as only a 50-foot-wide expansion of a long-established commercial use, and therefore, we'd recommend option number one. And we provided possible findings at the bottom of page nine that we think support approval of the applicant's request. I think that one thing that is a balancing act, but it's still, when you look at commercial impacts, sometimes getting cars off the street and into an off-street parking lot can improve the neighborhood by reducing on-street parking and congestion. So, that's one of the things that we looked at here. So, with that, we do have the applicant here. If you have questions, staff is available for any questions you have. And if you wanna have Dustin go back to any of the photos or graphics to have a second look, please let us know.
Okay, anybody got any questions for staff? I've just got one. Is the, is the house inhabitable? Is it, it's not?
Yeah, it's, it doesn't, it's not appeared yet on any of our dangerous structures lists, or it certainly is not something that we have on the list for demolition. But our observation is it did not appear to be inhabited at this time. And the, the buildings in back are not in a great state of repair. But it's not, it hasn't been condemned, or it's not on any dangerous list, but it doesn't look like it's been inhabited for some time.
Anybody got any questions for the applicant? Would the applicant like to say anything?
I've got a question. On that satellite image, it looks like there's a red vehicle. Is that the parking for the apartment there, then? Where is the parking for that apartment at? Like, if you look right in the bottom right, there's a red vehicle you can see.
So, they used to have a resident in that. We used to have a resident on that apartment, but right now, it's empty due to, I don't have enough parking to provide for the customer on the nail salon.
So, is your plan, if you were to turn this into a parking lot, is it to rent that out as a home again, then?
Oh, right now, I don't have any plan to rent to anybody else. It's empty still. And the house on 709 Merrill is, I don't think it's fixable. The condition is really weak.
And just to give you an idea on how staff, this is kind of a challenging one for staff. When we reviewed the building permits and the modifications, essentially, we concluded that the furniture store and the apartment were essentially grandfathered with no off-street parking. And so, what we were, what the applicant was responsible for was the difference in additional parking between what was the previous furniture store use and the nail salon use. So, all this was kind of existing. These were all added in order to allow for the nail salon to move in there. But as you can see, a lot of this had to be left vacant because there simply wasn't enough parking. So, our approach was looking at it historically. It had been a bunch of retail uses with no parking. There'd been an apartment with no parking. And so, all we required the applicant to do was address the additional parking created by the change to the use of a nail salon. So, that, that was the approach that we took.
And you currently own the property the house is on, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
How many more stations would you, would this allow you to put in nail stations?
If I have more parking by tearing the house down, I plan to have another five or six. Yes.
As a point of reference, the off-street parking regulations require two parking, two off-street parking stalls per station. Just to kinda, in your minds, as you think about that, that's what would be required if, for every station she would add, she would need to add two off-street parking spaces.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anybody from the public who would like to comment? Dustin, anybody online?
Mr. Chair, we do not have anyone online that's interested. We do have somebody online for the next application, but it doesn't appear anybody who wants to speak on the public on this matter.
Yeah, we did send out letters of notification to every property owner within 200 feet, and we did not get any comments back that we could share with you. We give people opportunity either call us or send us an email if they have an opinion, and we did not receive any public feedback.
Okay, if there's no more questions for the staff or the applicant, I'll bring it back up to commission for a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve application Z21-8 with the recommendation of the staff, number one, straight C3 zoning.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? It passes seven, zero.
I do wanna say for the benefit of the applicant, this is a recommendation from the planning commission. It will go to the city commission for an ordinance that would zone the property, and we'll let you know when that meeting will be. But it has to be approved in the form of an ordinance, and then the zoning will be changed.
Okay, we'll move down to 3.2.
We have a second public hearing item for you, and that's an application for a conditional use permit filed by Bill Miller on behalf of Millers of Claflin. And the request is for approval of a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a furniture warehouse in a planned highway commercial district. The property that is the subject of this application is a vacant lot located at the southwest corner of Yost Drive and Waterwell Road in the Yost Edition. And it will have an address of 3610 Yost Drive. And Mr. Hirsch will have a report for you on this item.
Yes, thank you. So, the Yost Edition was originally developed in 2002. And at that time, it was developed with multiple lots that were zoned Plan C7. C7 is our highway commercial district. And the purpose of the highway commercial district is to kind of promote and preserve uses along major interchanges for businesses that are reliant on interstate travel. Things such as convenience stores, things as hotels, restaurants, things of that nature. And so, since this is a major interchange along an interstate highway, which is somewhat of a rare asset for a community to have, the PC7 zoning is what, what was used as the controlling land use zoning on this property. There also was I3 and I2 zoning, I2 zoning on the west side of the creek and I3 on the south end. And these were zoned industrial because they were further away from the interchange. And the first development that went in was the Kansas Department of Transportation facility, which is the I3 at the very south end of Yost, at the cul-de-sac. And that development was the only development up until 2013. And in 2013, Old Dominion came forward with a rezoning proposal for a terminal, a trucking terminal operation at the south end of Yost Drive on the east end between Yost and the interstate highway. Now, because their operations did not fit within the prescribed or allowed uses in the C7 district, they applied to rezone the property. And in rezoning the property, they applied for a planned development district. And the reason that was done is to limit the negative effects that an industrial-type use might have on the surrounding commercial uses because the planning commission and city commission at the time still saw this interchange area, even though it'd been vacant for quite a while, as a primary commercial corridor or commercial node for future commercial development. And so, it is, it's a planned development district where a site plan was reviewed and approved by the planning commission. And today, it does have a development that, even though it's I2, it has standards similar to a commercial development where it has screening and landscaping and some of those aesthetic elements that are required in the commercial standards that aren't required in our industrial standards. And so, you'll see paving and landscaping and green space that you don't normally see in an I2 district. So, that brings us up to a few years ago where the city of Salina had a project for the police firing range, and that is across from the Old Dominion site. And this aerial photo was taken, I think, in April of 2020. That facility is now open and in operation, and that is a, has the PC7 zoning and a commercial development standard. So, the role of the planning commission in this case is typically when you have a planned district, and especially if you have a conditional use request such as this, you'll be looking at the proposed use, what the developer is proposing in terms of the use and how it fits within the context of the zoning district and the surrounding neighborhood. So, that's the first thing that you would look at. And the second thing you would look at would be the proposed development, such as the site plan, the landscaping, the building, and the materials and design that are used with that building. In this particular case, the applicant is requesting to defer the review of the final, what we call the final development plan to a later date as they are, there's a prospective buyer, purchaser of the property, Millers of Claflin, who would like to use this property for a warehouse. Warehouses are a conditional use permit in the C7 district. And before they get into the design stage of the project, they first wanna know if, if that use would even be allowed, if you would even see this as an allowable use at this location. So, our primary focus today is going to be a review of, of the site and the location and whether or not a warehouse facility is appropriate for this neighborhood and in this area. So, with that being said, there are, typically, when we look at a conditional use permit, we look at the zoning ordinance and the zoning ordinance requirements, and we go through those to see how well the, the plan meets those requirements. We do have a conceptual plan that I can show you, and it's, it's not a finalized plan. You will get a more detailed plan if you were to approve the conditional use permit as a final development plan at a later date before they could begin construction or obtain a building permit. But the initial thought is to have a 180 by 220-foot building, a square metal building, basically, that would have a trucking terminal operation where you'd have overhead doors that face Yost Drive in which trucks can come and enter the site and back into these terminals to load and unload furniture. And there's also parking for employees as well as customers who live regionally that may wanna just come and pick up their furniture rather than have the furniture delivered. And so, when we're looking at the welfare and convenience of the public, the, the question really here is what does, what benefit or how, how would the proposed warehouse impact the surrounding area, and what kind of convenience and welfare will it impact on the, on the public and the community of Salina? And so, as staff looks at this, one of the things that we would note is that we do have a trucking facility already in, in the neighborhood in Old Dominion. It's a little bit of a different type of, of use. Trucking facilities and warehouses are not uses that are necessarily dependent on interstate traffic. However, they do benefit from having close access to interstate highways and major thoroughfares. And so, I think one of the things to consider is, is not just the use of what's being proposed of the warehouse, but the form of that warehouse. And so, it's, it's possible that putting a vacant lot into productive use- And so it's possible that putting a vacant lot into productive use could be a benefit and a positive impact on the community. But I think one of the determining elements of that is how the site is designed, what the building looks like, and if it has an industrial appearance and feel or if it's more commercial. With the rest of the, with the rest of the area being intended for commercial activity, I don't think we want to deviate from the commercial nature of the site. So the building, as I mentioned, is 39,600 square feet. As a point of comparison, the Old Dominion site is 7,800 square feet, and the police training center is 15,800 square feet. So it's a little over twice as large as the police station and about five times larger than Old Dominion in terms of the scale of what's being proposed here. The height of the building and the design, this is the elevation drawings, and these are conceptual. These aren't final, and these are not up for review at the moment. But just to give you an idea of what they're thinking, it is a metal building. And as you can see, there are six overhead doors facing Yost Street, two man doors, and no windows. So it certainly does have an industrial appearance. And so one thing that the planning commission may want to think about as we go through this is if there are any conditions of approval or recommendations in terms of the types of elements that you believe would help retain a commercial aesthetic and commercial feel and make the proposed warehouse more conforming with the neighborhood and less industrial. Examples are landscaping. Both the Old Dominion and the police firing range have substantial landscaping to help lend it to a commercial appearance. Another idea that was done with the Old Dominion is all of the trucking terminals and parking were back behind the building line for the trucks. So if we were to look at the site today, you'll see that here's the front building line, and all of the trucking that takes place happens in a fenced-in area behind the front building line. The police firing training facility, most of their all-street parking was also back behind the building. Even though this isn't a fully developed picture, you can see where most of the parking ends up. And so there is some parking out front, but it's mostly for visitors and people that are coming from outside the organization with most of the personnel that are going to be training there parking back behind the building. So if you were to use some of those same ideas with this warehouse facility, there is quite a few, there's quite a bit of area to the west of the building where maybe the terminals can be back behind the building rather than out in front just to help it have more of a commercial appearance and less of an industrial appearance. When we look at the existing utilities on the site, all of the water and sewer have been added into this site. It has been fully constructed, so it's available. There are cost recovery fees. For the water line, which is a 24-inch water line, there is a $1,689 per square or per acre plus accrued interest. That's the fee for that. For sanitary sewer, we have a 12-inch line there, and the cost recovery fee is $3,487 per acre plus accrued interest. And for drainage, there is a drainage area to the west of the training facility. As part of a final development plan, they will need to do a storm water analysis to determine if additional detention is needed or if the drainage area that is back behind the police facility is sufficient. The road, Yost Drive, is already paved. It's already there. And there's a cost recovery fee of a little over $6,000 per acre. And that would be sufficient for truck traffic. There's already Old Dominion traffic that uses it as well as KDOT traffic. And both of those uses have larger trucks that are used. And we are in close proximity to Waterwell Road and the interstate highway. So we do have good access with this site. In conformance with the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan has this area as being future employment, which this use would be allowed with that type of future land use. So there are no amendments that are needed to the comprehensive plan or the future land use plan. We have a number of findings that we have listed on page nine that kind of summarize what we've talked about already. Alternatives for this particular action item. Is number one, you could approve the conditional use permit to allow a future furniture warehouse in this location upon finding that the requirements of Section 42-597(c)(2) of the Salina Code have been satisfied. Option number two is you could approve a conditional use permit subject to specific conditions and/or revisions of the applicant's site plan. Three, you could postpone consideration if you feel additional information is needed. And you could deny the application if you, the required findings of fact cannot be made or the commission believes that a furniture warehouse at this location would be incompatible with the surrounding area. Staff's recommendation, we believe that a review of a final development plan including the review of a site plan, building design, materials, and proposed landscape plan could be deferred to a later date. And if the commission has any specific recommendations that they'd like to see in terms of that site development just to help the applicant have an understanding of whatever expectations you might have, that's always helpful for them on the front end so that when they do bring a final development plan forward, they kind of know what it is that you're looking for. So if there are any conditions of approval, staff would ask that the commission add those. The three that we've come up with with our recommendation are, one, that the use, occupancy, and construction of the building shall conform to the International Building Code. Number two, a final development plan for this project, including colored building elevations detailing the materials and design of the proposed building, a site plan, and a detailed landscape plan showing the variety and size of the proposed plantings shall be submitted for review by the planning commission within 18 months of the commission approving the warehouse as an allowed use on the site. And then the final one that we've noted is that a final storm runoff calculations and proposed storm water detention area design, if determined to be needed, shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to issuance of a building permit. So basically, a storm system or storm water analysis for that and a plan if necessary. So with that, staff will take any questions and go over any of the slides that we looked at if you'd like to see any of those again.
Okay, any questions for staff? Dustin, I got one. On that, on the alternative actions, you say approve a conditional use permit to allow a furniture warehouse in this location upon finding the requirements of Section 42-597(c)(2). What is Section 42-597?
Yeah, I thought, as I was saying, I was like, I should, in my mind, I was like, I should explain. That's the conditional use permit section. So the conditional use permit section here just talks about what we've already gone through. So for instance, when we're looking at this, we're analyzing the welfare and convenience of the public, which is one of the topics we talked about. We're looking at the injury to the surrounding properties and the domination of the neighborhood. We're looking at the building itself, if there is one. We're looking at the existing utilities and drainage. We're looking at traffic, access, and parking, and things of that nature. So basically, it's the idea that the site is suitable for what's being proposed. That's what you're saying if you're agreeing to that.
If you look in your packets right after the staff report, there's an attachment three. And that attachment three is the summation of that, the ordinance section that Dustin just described.
And then this property actually backs up, or the back of the property actually backs up to the side of the police training center, right? Or the firing range?
So I'll show you just to clarify that. So the property that we're looking at is you have this platteled lot of record that I'm, have on the aerial photo that I'm drawing a box around. This is a platteled lot of record. And what has happened is that platteled lot of record is being split. It's being split into two parcels. Parcel one, which is 5.478 acres. Parcel two, which is 5.415 acres. So this piece here, this north piece, which is right adjacent to Waterwell Road, so it, you know, fit in here kind of like this. I got a better graphic here. There we go. This blue area, right along Waterwell Road at the corner of Waterwell and Yost, that's the subject property. So the police facility is still a ways to the south, if you will. So there are two vacant developable lots in between.
Now, on that image you just shared showing the split of that, I noticed that there is a West Star Transmission Line. Is there any concern about splitting this lot with that second lot that's created not being buildable?
No, and that's a very good question. And we actually brought that up with the applicant as well. And during this process, what we learned and identified is that this particular easement, the transmission line, has been vacated. So Evergy has acquired additional easements in different parts of, different locations within the city of Salina, and they've rerouted some of their major line networks. So this has actually been vacated and will be completely removed from the site. So the one benefit is that we don't have to worry about that power easement anymore on this property or in the Yost addition in general. And the applicant can probably speak more to that.
Okay, any more questions for staff? If the applicant here, they'd like to...
We have an applicant in the room or people representing the applicant in the room, and we also have the applicant online.
Okay, has anybody got any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Commissioner, this is Jeff Mace with Compro Realty. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about not being there in person. I've been under the weather fighting a intense head cold. And unfortunately, in today's day and age, being out in the public, sneezing around makes people nervous. So I chose to join by Zoom. I prefer to be there. I worked with both parties in putting this together and am representing on the application, the applicants. Millers of Claflin came to us early on and have been pursuing for quite some time a alternative warehouse location that would also serve as a pickup location for customers. Their initial efforts were to, they really frankly wanted to locate this in a true, more of a retail-type location. But, you know, in that South Ninth Corridor and buying five acres by the square foot of 10 bucks a square foot, it starts getting to be pretty expensive warehouse ground. And I took them out and showed them this location as an alternative, but they were intensely interested in their customers' ability to find the location in their selection. So I shared that with you just to give you a little bit of background about where they're headed and what they want this to be. For those of you that don't know, they also own the Ashley's Furniture. So they operate not only as Millers of Claflin, but also as Ashley Furniture and have a number of locations, really frankly serving all of the state. And they had defined a need to build a larger, just flat warehouse to store furniture, but also wanted to make this kind of a regional, not kind of, but a regional pickup location as well. So it, while it's warehouse in nature, there's also, we're not going to have a big showroom, but there's going to be customers coming on site to pickup locations. And so in talking with staff early on and identifying the site, I was frankly headed down a rezoning path of a lot. And then talking with Dean and Dustin, they indicated that the CUP might be a better path to take. And so what you see before you from a survey standpoint and the site planning was just that, kind of to define what we could get in the bag and where those property lines needed to be based on what they thought they wanted to build. So Mike McCall with MC Squared was good enough to work with us and kind of gave us that site plan. But that was really more at that point in the game was to really just kind of define how much area did we need to build what the Millers family thought they needed to put in there. So that's what that is. We're fully aware that it's a planned district. We're fully aware that we need to come back for you with that truly defined and all the details of what we're going to go build. I would share with you on their behalf that, you know, again, they want this signed. They want this to look like a retail pickup location because they do anticipate customer interaction on the site, not just straight warehousing. But again, they've got that large volume of space need as well. So that gives you a little background on the request, why we're here asking for the CUP. From a process standpoint, as staff indicated, and again, very accurately, they're, we're asking from you, are you, do you think the CUP works here? Is this appropriate? If so, we're ready to perform and close with the owners, the Bradley Trust, and close on the property and then work on the plan and get that all nailed down with you. None of the standards or the three criteria that staff has outlined for your consideration are of a concern of ours. Again, we want, they're going to want this to be representative of their businesses in the full retail segments in the markets that they serve. So we have no issue with any of the three recommendations that staff has outlined. And I guess with that, I would answer any questions I'm able that you may have of us.
Jeff, I guess the only question I got, you said it was, it's going to look like a retail space, but it isn't really going to be a retail space. It's going to be a pickup space.
It's going to be a pickup location. When I say retail, I mean, it's not going to have a whole 150-foot of aluminum storefront and all that because we're not going to have showroom space. So my point is they're going to sign it to the degree in which the city allows them to sign it. They want good signage. They want it to be very prevalent at the interchange relative to their customers being able to see where they're at. That's why, you know, we discussed going deeper into the development, and it was a deal killer for the Millers. So I don't want to misconstrue. No, we're not going to have a whole big expansive aluminum glass storefront, but they are going to sign it. I wouldn't read into. In fact, we've talked a little bit about where those dock doors are relative to where the customer pickup was and all of that. But I thought we would come before your body and get some direction and some thoughts from you. And then knowing full well, we have to come back and show you what we think we ultimately will build.
Well, I guess the problem I still have, if you say it's, you say it's a retail space, but it isn't a retail space, I guess that's what I don't understand. The part of it is, I mean, you know, if, you know, if it's a duck and looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. I mean, you know, it's a, but, you know, are we looking at approving something that we say that is not a retail space but has a retail front? Then later on down the road, we end up turning it into a retail, more of a retail space? I mean, it's a...
Well, I, and thank you, maybe I'm being unclear, Mr. Chairman, but if we had retail in there, if we had 3,000 square foot of retail, we wouldn't need to rezonate and, or ask for the CUP. The point, I guess, that I would give you today, and I'm maybe confusing the matter in saying that we very much wanted to locate this facility like you were locating true retail. But, you know, the economics of warehousing and retails, but, you know, just from a land acquisition perspective are pretty substantial. So I guess I may be confusing the issue. The CUP is for warehousing. If we would have went in there and going to put 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 square foot of retail in there, we wouldn't need the CUP because we could operate under the C7. But we need the CUP, and we need the CUP to run with the land, meaning, I know that we had previously in a recent meeting talked about that being restricted just to the applicant. But we in turn can't go build that kind of warehouse project and not have that conditional use stay with the property at the same time. So this is all due diligence. It's rather, we can go build what we want to build there. Is that helpful at all?
So Dustin...
I feel like I'm confusing things.
Then if we approve the CUP, does that mean down the line that they could turn the, that they could turn the CUP into a full retail business? I guess that's where I...
I defer, I defer to staff.
Yeah, potentially. Yeah, potentially, they could. I'll pull up the code so that we can have a have a look at it. Go give me a moment. And we can see the list of permitted uses that the C7 allows as well as the conditional uses that allows, which includes warehousing, which is what the applicant is currently requesting.
The primary distinction between a pure retail operation and a warehouse is parking. If you have a warehouse, you're only providing parking for your warehouse employees and all that. If you don't have a retail showroom, then you're not needing to require parking for customers based on a showroom. So a warehouse has much lower parking requirements than a retail store would have.
So on the screen for the commission's benefit are the permitted uses in the C7. So you do have some various types of of retail, restaurants, hotels, things that are primarily oriented to interstate and highway traffic. Then you also have a number of conditional uses. And there's, there's actually more conditional uses than there are permitted uses in the C7, one of which is is warehouses.
And one of which is furniture stores. So a furniture store is a permitted use, a permitted conditional use. But planning staff believes this is a warehouse. We've classified it as a warehouse. And so the conditional use permit is for a warehouse. They have some flexibility of how they divide up the space inside. But if they were to convert this to a full-blown furniture store, they would need to amend their conditional use, and they would also need to address parking based on their retail showroom, which we're not anticipating in this case.
Okay, I think that's what I was getting at, so thank you.
Jeff, am I correct by saying it's just no showroom but retail pickup available, correct?
Yeah, there, that's exactly correct.
Thank you.
You're going to go to, you're going to go to Ashley Furniture and buy something. And rather than, that's going to be stored at this warehouse, and you're going to go there and pick up your mattress or your bed set or whatever it is you purchased. Think that's the vision. Because they're just, you know, they're doing most of that off the floor, and they just don't have the warehouse and space available to take care of their geographic area that they cover around the state.
Mr. Mays, I have a question for you or maybe kind of help add some clarity to what you said earlier. I think I've seen an application similar to this when I lived in the Kansas City area, I believe it was in Olathe. And it was a furniture store. So, I mean, it's apples and apples. And kind of that retail appearance comment, I think kind of a, maybe the branding and architectural elements like color, I think were carried over in the one in Kansas City. And I'm kind of getting the read or the vibe, but that's the direction that these applicants want to do as well, that there's kind of a branding element to the warehouse. So you're, it's unmistakable that it's a Millers of Claflin or Ashley's warehouse.
Yeah, I think you're going to see for sure Millers of Claflin and Ashley's where, you know, Ashley's Furniture branding on the building. I don't want to get too far in front of them and make promises, you know. But I think they've made it very clear to me when we were looking at location and exploring all options that they want this to look, you know, be representative of their businesses. So it's not going to be a truck terminal, if you will. I think there's some wainscoting that's illustrated. And and I don't want to draw too much attention to those elevations and that because they were really more steered around trying to define how much ground. But they know full well that they have to come back in front of this board to get, you know, their final site plan and all the elevations. Again, we have no issues with the stipulations that the that the staff has requested you to approve in the in the CUP. But yes, to your point, Commissioner Lickwes, yes, that's correct. I mean, I think you're going to see that type of signage and those type of things.
Yeah, the real purpose of today's hearing is for the planning commission to determine is the warehouse used and appropriate use in this location. And that's really all we're focused on today, subject to deferred review of plans later.
Understood.
Jeff, one last question. I may be getting ahead of myself, but have you discussed at all possibly, and I don't know how, let me know how the board feels on this, but flipping the site layout to match more of Old Dominion to where the front of the the front property matches up with Yost and the receiving docks are in the back on the west side?
One of the challenges we had, we've had a lot of conversations, and what you see is one iteration thereof. But one of the challenges that we have is that that lot goes all the way back to the center line of Dry Creek. And we started getting so deep for what we, and they they really frankly are are anticipating in the future maybe having to add on to the to the west of this. Again, everybody's looking in there for crystal balls. But we were just getting to the place where we were having to buy so much ground in order to accomplish that circulation that this was, this was one iteration. But it, but again, it kind of is in the face of when you get off, and these are internal conversations that we've had, but when you get off of the interchange and know you just go west of that interchange, what are you seeing? And you're, you know, that's one of the conversations that we discussed is how do we, how do we manage that to give that appearance that we just have been discussing to our customers, but still manage truck traffic? Because it, again, to our point, I mean, it gets really deep for what our needs are. But knowing full well, the businessmen, the Bradleys are, we weren't going to get a lot split east and west to where we could get deeper down Yost Drive and do some of those things. So, but and, you know, of course, they were going to want us to go all the way to Dry Creek. So it was just, it was a depth of lot issue. Nothing's finalized as far as how we're going to do this. This was just trying to define that south property for the lot split.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant or the staff? Anybody from the public like to make a comment?
So as Representative for Duck and Kathy, I've been dealing with Jeff for the last couple of months on this. We're as cautious as everybody else when it comes to allowing people into that area, only because all the surrounding ground is owned by the family trust. So we have vetted a lot of different people. We really like this, and it makes sense for us. So we'd like to see it go forward.
Okay. Anybody else online?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anyone joining us on Zoom from the public.
Okay. If there's nobody online, nobody else has any comments, I'll bring it back to commission for action.
I'll make a comment. I think if it's executed the way we're talking, I think it'll be cohesive with what's in that area and should in, should fit in well.
I mirror that. And honestly, I think that if the building were laid out such that, you know, that the customer pickup side were toward the northeast corner of the site, having more of the commercial docks to the south side, that would be the first that you see coming down Waterwell from the interstate. And so, I mean, that could make it a little bit more nice to look at as well as move some of that more commercial stuff further away from the main thoroughfare and clean it up some.
Yeah, that was my biggest thing is just kind of separating more of the commercial deliveries, pickups versus the residential. So I'm sure that can be worked out later on and as they prepare a site plan, though.
So do we have a motion?
Yeah, with that, I would, I would move with the staff recommendation that we recommend that the review of the final development plan, including the review of the site plan, building design and materials and proposed landscaping be deferred to a later date with approval of the conditional use permit application for the proposed use only with the following conditions of approval plus any additional conditions listed on page 10.
Second then. Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry.
More discussion?
Excuse me, sorry, I didn't catch the second.
Since there's no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Chair.
So there, there is a 14-day protest period on that, which we don't anticipate. But then there'll be a written summary of today's action that we'll provide to the applicant after that protest period expires.
Okay, any legislative matters, says none, administrative items?
We have none. We don't have any preliminary discussion items scheduled. And staff has no other business to bring up other than the fact that we do have applications filed for the first meeting in December, which would be December the 7th. And we're uncertain about December 21st, but we will let you know. At this point, we don't, don't have anything filed or on the horizon. But we do know we have applications that we've advertised for your December 7th meeting, so.
Do we have any updates on, there's several projects that are out there, the tire store, the hotel. I know that the assisted living and the other thing was brought up at the commission meeting the other night and everything. But is there any, any updates on some of the stuff? I know we're getting, you know, it's kind of disheartening sometime to find out as hard as, you know, they work up here and, you know, get stuff approved and get stuff done and then find out it's not.
Well, the the final plat for, we need to have final plat and platted lots for the assisted living facility and the Lakeview Estates. That is going before the city commission this coming Monday, the 22nd. And then once the plat is recorded and the infrastructure is installed, they can begin construction on that facility. And the city commission authorized the use of special assessments to put that infrastructure in. So you're not, you're not going to see, you might see some earthwork and some preparatory site work. You're not going to see any vertical construction going up right away with that facility. We're still in communication with the the hotel developers of the mall with some tweaks to their plan, just to to take into account some access to the drainage ditch along Magnolia. And as far as I know, the permit has been issued for the discount tire store unless I'm mistaken, Dustin.
Yeah, I believe it has, if my memory serves correctly.
There was also a plan that was not this year, but the year prior, where there was a a plan to tear down and rebuild a drive-through-only Pizza Hut out in front of Target and then build another building there. And we've got building permit plans in for that project. The other thing that the planning commission reviewed and the the original plan was to make some renovations, but the the Atwood store in the old Kmart, they decided to move in as is so that they could take advantage of the seasonal sales. So it's my understanding that that's going to open sometime this week or this weekend. And so they should, should, if they don't, they've got their sign permits. I don't know if they have their signs up, but essentially, we've told them they they're move-in ready. So that, that should be happening. And then the other thing, I'm not sure, it's been in the newspaper and other places, but there was an auction that occurred today on all of the properties owned by the Marietta family surrounding Menards. There were three tracks out there, one south of Menards, one west of Menards, and one between the creek and the industrial area. All those were auctioned off today, as well as a property on Diamond Drive. We don't know the results of that, but we've gotten lots of comments, questions from people on those those different properties. And so we'll probably learn more on that. But much of the interest we were getting in that area was from people interested in doing residential. And that that corridor has been kind of a struggle for the planning commission, trying to figure out what's the best use to fill in between where Menards is and Centennial Road. And before, it was kind of looked as light industrial, maybe extension of commercial along some of Magnolia. But given the interest in housing right now, it may very well come before you as plans for housing. But based on the inquiries we were getting, there was lots of interest in in that property. And then the other property that it's not being done by auction but by sealed bid is that the Pace family has put all their properties up for sealed bids. And that would include the former Patio Mobile Home Court at Crawford and Broadway. And then they have a large property that's at the corner of Euclid and North Ninth Street. And those have also garnered a lot of interest. So there's a good possibility that the that Mobile Home Court will be cleared off and prepared for some redevelopment. And almost any redevelopment is going to require zoning and a plan. So we would anticipate, at least for next year, you might be busy looking at changes of use on on those properties.
That's a good thing.
One more, the area south of Part, or sorry, north of Party City, off of Ninth Street.
Mm-hmm.
What was that?
It was all platted and zoned. One of the discussed, there was, there was nothing firm at the time as to uses, but it is platted and zoned, and it's set up, the infrastructure's in. So should there be a commercial user, it's basically shovel-ready at this point.
Gotcha.
Okay.
But Dustin, do you recall whether we issued the permit for the discount tire? I thought we had done that, it was under construction, but.
Yeah, I believe so.
And that that would be north of the the entrance to the north entrance to Central Mall. And so that, that plan was reviewed by the planning commission as as well.
Allison, just informing that she thinks that it's ready to be issued, but there's, they're still working on some of their contractors.
Okay.
Okay.
So we, I know we had the plans in and reviewed them. I couldn't speak to what the, what the timing of it was.
Okay.
But I think that's, that's the best update of what's happening. We are, you approved the final plat of the Center Point Edition, which is on Cedar Ridge Drive. And the new owners who purchased it from Mr. Hayworth are moving forward with getting their plans for putting in water, sewer, and streets. They plan to do that next.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda, public forum, is there anybody that would like to bring something up?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. First of all, thank you, thank you guys for all the time and effort you put into serving in these very well-paying volunteer jobs. I'm here to ask just a, just a few things, make a few comments about some of the recent developments, mainly concerning the Magnolia Point housing issue. One of the things, I've, I've, I've followed this pretty much a little bit out of, out of the way. But when the questions were asked last week at the end of the meeting, it kind of really made my ears stand up. And I went back to see if I could find as much information as I could about the package from September 7th. I was disappointed to find that it's not available online. So, but one of the things that I did recall throughout that process was, and the question that I had all along was concerning the traffic and not just the traffic counts, but such things as entryway setbacks and acceleration, deceleration lanes. Also, the site plan was problematic. The issue of having housing there originally was problematic. And so I'm kind of flying a little bit blind here, but a few suggestions that I have that might be helpful in the future is that if, if an issue comes up like this again, I think it would be helpful, especially when commissioners request a traffic study, that if one has been conducted, that that one that's already been conducted, even though it's 12 years old, be included in the packet so that you can review it. And also the letter that was provided by the city engineer. And um, also the letter that was provided by the city engineer that signed off on, on the roads, on the traffic study, et cetera. One of the things um, that I mentioned um, about this, about the road configuration, and this was in the traffic and access portion clear back in 2008. And I'll just read this, this part. It, and it's discussing, it says, "The applicant's engineer is proposing a three-lane intersection on Virginia Drive with dedicated left-turn lane for traffic exiting this proposed shopping center." And it goes on, the last sentence of that paragraph says, um, "Providing adequate stacking space on Virginia Drive adjacent to Lot 1 uh, will be an important design consideration in determining appropriate ask, access points to Lot 1." When I saw their initial site plan and knowing where the hotel is and stuff, it's always going to be problematic to put an access drive off of Virginia Drive onto that. That was not, as far as I can tell, that was not provided in the packet that you guys were tasked with reviewing. Um, the other thing is, is that, and it has to do with the, uh, it has to do with the easement and operation agreement that was, that Menards had decided not to consent to uh, the residential use. Um, I think what's important to consider is the fact that Menards, and staff was aware of this, is what I learned clear back in July of some, at some time. But staff was aware that Menards had the ability to not consent to a residential use. Based on when this was approved, that residential was a prohibited use, which is actually the reason why they had to come back before you, uh, to get any sort of approval on this thing. Um, and just, um, just, Ms. Waters, I know you're, you're an engineer, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'm a land planner, landscape architect, and I'm a site planner. Um, I've got 30 years of getting approvals in front of planning commissions and city commissions in 14 different states. Um, never in Salina, but I did serve um, on the city commission, so I am somewhat familiar with um, conditional use permits and zoning. One thing that um, struck me was the fact that you were given a conditional use permit to where residential is a condition. Menards denied the residential uh, use of that. And I'm troubled with the fact that none of you were made aware that at any point residential was not desired for that location. And I'll even read this, I don't want to take too much time because these good folks want to go home and so do you. But um, in 2010, when the final plat was considered, um, as you know, you often need to provide findings of fact. And your findings of fact in 2008 and 2010 were that the planning commission offered the following reasons in support of a recommendation, and that recommendation was for a rezone to PC5. The very first one, because of its interstate street frontage and visibility and the commercial development on the other side of the interchange, the site is more suitable for commercial development than agricultural or residential use. So I think that that's sort of a tip that we want commercial there, we don't want residential. Um, no, there was no information given and, and Vice Mayor Davis brought it up at city commission meeting, that connectivity with streets and sidewalks were not considered. The fact that it's an automobile-only subdivision was not a consideration. Access to parks, schools, all those other things. Connectivity is a big part of what we talk about here, and yet that wasn't brought up in the staff report. And so I think that you guys get short-changed and can't ask appropriate questions when it's not put before you. Um, and then just the last thing, because it relates a little bit to the C7, PC7 on the Millers of Claflin deal. I, I think it might, might be helpful at some point, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you could maybe request an inventory of all of the commercial properties that are available at our interstate interchanges? Because as you may well imagine, those are, those are designated C5, C7, in a lot of cases, planned commercial districts. They're very valuable land, not just for the property taxes, but we generate a lot of sales tax uh, from those prop, from the highway commercial as well. And so every time we take a use out of commercial, retail, highway retail, and convert that into either warehouse space or um, residential, in the case of the Menards one, we're really limiting our, it, it's one less parcel that we have to develop um, in that particular fashion. And so most of our interstate interchanges either have undeveloped land, the land on one side of it and not on the other. And so we're hamstrung a lot because of floodplains and access issues to begin with. So it would be helpful to see the big picture instead of just, you guys are always brought the little picture. And it would be good to help you guys make better decisions for our future if we know uh, the full breadth of what's available to you. So appreciate your time and, and just some of those things I hope you consider.
Thank you, Mr. Byjder. Anybody else like to say anything? Okay, our next meeting date, December 7th. Uh, I would request a motion for adjournment.
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes seven zero. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.